Being here today, if you would please stand for our invitation, then we'll ask Mr. Cock and Daw to lead us in our place. Kind and merciful heavenly Father, we thank you today for the many things that you've blessed us with, as unobserving creatures as we are. We recognize that the brother of thy providence and ours to enjoy thy mercy that follows us like an ever-flowing spring. But as we pause in our busy lives today, we thank you for the blessings that we have in your name. We recognize that the past is gone and the future's before us, and we recognize that we live today. So Father, give us grace for today. Give us a portion of thy Holy Spirit that we might devote our minds for those wild and the things that disturb and depress us, and set our affection on those things that are above. Help us, Father, of those that sit around this table, to seek wisdom from above, to look unto thee who is the author and finisher of our faith. Bless our many and varied communities in a special way, our nation, our great state, and our county, and all those who abide therein. Continue with us, lead God to rest us again, accept our thanks in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please, 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 delight, attention, joy, pleasure.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Back to the seat, please. Again, we thank you for your presence here this morning. We will expedite our agenda as quickly as possible. We had an item or two that we had to remove, but we will go through this as quickly as we can. Again, we appreciate you being here, and we ask the continued interest in your prayers and your attendance. First item, the bids approved by minutes from our last meeting. There have been any changes that need to be made. If you receive them, please acknowledge that. If not, I've submitted a motion that we adopt those minutes if you receive them. Your second? Motion seconded in discussion. Many, many, no saying aye. Anyone post make your objection. Thank you. First item, the road department's maintenance update was brought.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'll take you real quick on a couple of things. I think I updated your last meeting. We had started our second round on herbicide application. You were doing real good on this. I think he likes just another half day in District Two, and he'll be moving to District Four. It only takes him somewhere around fifty to sixty hours to do that district. That's all he likes being done. We're not swaying today. He's actually having to attend the recertification class in Gunnerford today, so hopefully we'll be able to get started back on that tomorrow. Our hauling shirt today into District Four. Crew leader has some roads that he wanted to try to get some shirt on for winter time, so we have a truck spooling in that direction. Have a crew on the yard that's pre-mixing some base material that's going to be used on our roads and our CDBG grant. We actually started on that. Got one of the roads, County Road 1001, got it reclaimed. We have the base material hauled onto it, compacted. All we need to do is just do some finishing grade work on it before the paving contractor comes in. We'll start reclaiming County Road 1002 tomorrow. Probably take a little over half a day to reclaim it, and we'll get it to compact it and probably start hauling base material in on it tomorrow, and then hopefully finish that Thursday. And we'll still like some patchwork, some leveling work we've done on County Road 1000 and a portion of 608 that's included in this grant, and that's going to finish us up. We're probably a little over fifty percent complete with that project of the overall scope of it, of our part, so we've had good success on that. Still have our patch trucks going out every day, all three of them. Some of the crews have days that they don't have the manpower to do planning, and we try to find another district to send it into. So far, we've been able to keep all three of them running every day. The oil and crews are all started. They're trying to get around with bush cutters. Like Scott said, his crew was really struggling to get around with their bush cutters. High demand on land right now. Growing season, it's, we've had enough rain and everything. Things are really growing this year, so hopefully they'll continue to make good success with that. We have a couple of bush cutters in the shop right now that are down over District Four. Machine's there, and I think the District Three machine also was there. I was telling Scott, we might want to look at trying to cycle these out maybe next year. That's probably would be a good plan, because they seem to be getting enough hours on them now that they're getting in trouble, so give them trouble. We have these, I think they're twelve models, seem like so. They've held up real good. The tractors are still in pretty good shape, but the cutters are beginning to show their age, and it's a lot of wear and tear on those. I'm going to try to get some information together sometime in the next few weeks. Guy we've been buying these from, he was building a carrier that he's mounting his cutters on. He can't mount them on an ag tractor anymore. He's actually building a four-wheel drive carrier. It's a lot more stable. It's just a better setup for this, to carry this cutter. He has some side mower attachments. We may look at some of that. Some counties, I know he's got some videos, some counties out in Texas that are taking these and they're mounting a five-foot side mount mower on it, and they're carrying actually a ten-foot straight with this. If we could utilize that, it would allow us to get rid of four tractors and bush hogs and just replace those four tractors and these four bush cutters with this one particular machine. It also has several quick attachments that will mount to the front of. One of those being a snowplow, and these things will travel about twenty-eight miles an hour on the road. Set their four-wheel drive, four-wheel steering. So we end up in other snow, which I hope we don't have one, but they would be good to use on our secondary roads, maybe to do some snow removal with. It'd be a lot faster and tear up a lot less than a roller motor would. Anyway, I'm going to get you some more information on that, and we'll talk about that in the weeks to come, but I think we're probably going to be trying to do something about those maybe next year. That's about all I have for your maintenance update. If you have any questions, I'll try to answer those for you.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls. Any questions?
Now, you said you got some videos of that.
You can, I can give you a link to those YouTube videos. You can watch them actually at work, so.
Thank you.
County Road 608, are you probably doing any reclaiming on that, or is it just?
No, it's just getting the surface treatment on it. We had decided not to reclaim it and the 1000 because the surface is, it's got a fairly good surface on it. It needs some leveling done on it, but I just would not advise reclaiming it or the other. I think we can get by without that and still have a very good road.
I know them was very good roads at San Pete. I know those folks at Barsterry, what's going on?
Yeah, those roads were, they were in actually pretty bad shape when we took them in, and they only got worse. They just didn't have a very good base under some of these. Mr. Brawls, an unnumbered County Road offset in City, what, what did it do anything about that? It needs some work done on it. It's an old road that we paved back in somewhere around the mid-nineties, and until we went down there a few weeks ago and did a little work on it, I don't think it had anything done to it since then. The paving's pretty much all gone off of it, and it really, we need to put a little shirt on it and probably be a very good road. Could treat the base material on it, I think. It would be one of the low-traffic volume this guy on it. You probably wouldn't have to grade it, but once every couple of years, I'd say probably we're going to need because it's just not very much traffic on it. In order to get that number, we just go through the county number? Yeah, just need to request Cannon High 911. I think Ben, he normally sends them a map or description or something, and they would address it. And of course, the people who live on it will have to change their paving address, their address on County Road 76 now.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls. And the other question?
Tom, what was that road, that last road number?
It does not have those numbers. It's just an unnumbered part of the road.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's okay. That's what I.
It needs to have a number assigned to it. There's more than, there's two or more houses on it. Actually, 911 requires it to have a number assigned to it.
Yes, I just got lost.
Yeah, it's a, it's just a little dead-end road that, it's a county maintained road. Like I said, I actually helped pave it. For some reason, I handed it up on the paving crew the day that I paved it and I ran the rubber on the paving crew, so there's no doubt it is a county maintained road.
Thank you, Mr. Brawls. Appreciate it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Sharpe has got damage claim.
I have one damage claim from a bag of heat, heating. Her claim is that her vehicle was damaged on County Road 639. Leels were burst on that on the path up, and so she gets sent a claim, and I would request we send this to our insurance company.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpe. Here, motion forward to insurance care.
Motion.
Your second?
Second.
Motion seconded in discussion. Many, many, no saying aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Utility body award, Mr. Blue.
Good morning. Thursday last week, we opened bids for the utility bed with a crane that we want to mount on the cabin chassis truck that we purchased, I think back in June. We did a bid with Donnu Chevrolet, Victoria, 2019 cabin chassis for a new mechanic truck for the road department. And this is the utility body that will be mounted on that truck, and as part of this bid, also included an auto crane that's mounted on the bed, and all that will be installed on this cabin chassis. We received two bids, one from Terrex Utilities. Their bid price was thirty-four thousand, two fourteen fifty-five. We also did an option on a vice. We have the mounting plate, but Tommy wanted to just do the vice itself as an option. Thought we might could probably find one or get one, you know, on our own that had that price, but the option on their vice was two hundred seventeen dollars, ninety-one cents, and their delivery timeframe was about thirty weeks. And our low bid was from Southeastern Truck Body. Their bid price was twenty-seven thousand, eight eighty and sixty-four cents. Their vice option was a hundred and five dollars, and their timeframe for delivery is eighteen to twenty-one weeks. This would be my recommendation that we make build this Southeastern Truck Body.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. Any questions? About the bid award?
Well, it takes a while. You said it's time to do it.
I think they, thirty weeks, they build a lot of these from scratch, from hard water, other different setups, but yeah, this one, it takes a little while to get them in and get them fitted.
Making motion for the award. Mr. Jackson, making motion, your second?
Second.
Motion seconded. Mr. Cock and Daw, in discussion. Many, many, no saying aye. Anyone post make your objection. Thank you.
Also, just real quick, with Mr. Cock and Daw, we need to announce that the bridge replacement project on County Road 212 at Big Wheels Creek, this is the main road going up towards the landfill off of County Road 51. That project is completed, and we opened the bridge and the alignment on Wednesday last week, so traffic is running on it, and that, that project is complete. The old bridge is closed off and barricaded. Turned out very well. It's going to be a, be a very good structure there for a very long time, so just want to make that announcement so that everybody knows that project is complete.
Thank you, Mr. Blue. And also, so appreciate Mr. Cock and Daw's work on this, although it's not that short project, but a long, drawn-out project, and none of these things are quick and there in results. Mr. Cock and Daw, I think we need you in a special way for your difficulty in persevering in the completion of this project from the other gentleman.
One quick comment. I will remind people that the road is now posted at twenty-five miles an hour, and we would like for people to voluntarily obey that particular speed limit for your own sake and also preserve the road, and after a suitable length of time, we'll decide if it's going to work. Followed carefully. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Safety award. Last week, we attended a meeting, and I wanted them to let me slip it to come up, but during that ninetieth annual meeting, Alabama County Commissioners Association, our county was second in the state in three categories. I was at the top category, but our county was second in the state in their safety program. And I was there, Ms. Jackson was there, and Ms. Westbrook was there, and Mr. Sharpe was there, and I, I just feel like that it's incumbent on us to recognize Mr. Matt Martin and Mr. Erbey Wallace, because they head this up, but greater than that, the department heads that are so cooperative in this issue, which is so vitally, vitally important. And let me explain how the end result of that comes about. During all these programs and inspections and all the things that are incorporated into that, they take all these things in under consideration, and to come in in the top three, much less to be second in that kind of program, is phenomenal, as far as I'm concerned. But here's the result of it. Because of that, we get a refund on our insurance premium of almost forty-four, forty-five thousand dollars. Not only that, our insurance premium is reduced a little over seven thousand dollars. And they gave the EMA office here a check for a thousand dollars. That was one of the awards, but fifty-one, fifty-two thousand dollars may not seem like a lot of money to some folks, but to me, that's real money, and, and I can't, even though that's incorporated into this program, it saves us money, it, and I serve now, we will, in, beginning January the first, we will do all our insurance in-house with County Risk Services, and I'm fortunate enough to be chairman of that board. And Ms. Blitton, I just want you to know that you and your people and the department heads all over the county, with the employees that we have, with Brawls, the engineering, and everybody else, make just as much contribution to this as anybody did, and it is commend that you all take time to impress on our employees the importance of safety efforts, and it shows up in things like this. I needed to say that, but I'll give you floor for us another explanation.
Well, we appreciate it. As a member of the safety committee, I'm so sorry that Mr. Wallace and Mr. Martin couldn't be here. Mr. Martin was with us at, at the ACCA conference to accept the award. We, we have worked very diligently. What, what Mr. Harkrow is, is not telling you is that under his leadership, as president of ACCA, the insurance, self-insurance program is when we begin to take, take part of that, and the insurance discount program is, is, he was president of ACCA the year that started. Since that time, we have been able to, we have actually for the last five years, finished in the top three, five years in a row. And with that said, that just speaks to the leadership of, of the commission. All the commissioners have, have backed us, and, and like Mr. Harkrow said, with the safety committee, which includes all of the department heads throughout the county, we all work together. We meet at least quarterly. We discuss, you know, our workers' comp claims, we discuss our liability claims and how we can reduce those liabilities. Now, when you look at it and you compare us to everybody else across the state, we have one of the safest road departments in, in the state, and that comes from, from our insurance company, because under Mr. Brawls' leadership, we have managed to decrease our workers' comp claims, and I'm sorry, I can't quote the exact figure, but it's somewhere in the neighborhood of, oh, like seventy percent. We, we have decreased in the last five years. We have taken, we have taken those steps necessarily, he has taken steps necessarily to make sure that everybody does those things they're supposed to do. Another high-risk area we've had is the sheriff's office. It has, the sheriff's office has really decreased their claims exponentially over the last five years, and, and with the work of everybody, keep in mind that there, there's two different pieces to this. One is the workman's comp piece, which makes us a safe workplace, but it's also the liability piece. We work very hard to decrease those, those things that might, might cause harm or allow a citizen to, to be injured. We've done things like increased signage. We've added stair treads, the, the treads to the, to the stairs to keep you from slipping. We've added handrails. We've added other safety measures. One of the biggest safety measures we did this, this past year was we redid the cameras in this, in this building. We made, we secured this building. For some of you have noticed that we, we now have a security coming in and out of the door. We, we were able to actually physically secure the building better than we ever have, and we're continuing that throughout the county, and it's not just this building. It's all the county buildings, you know, little bitty things right down to, you know, signage out at High Falls Park. And so it's been an ongoing effort over the last many years, and we, we will continue. We will continue to have changes in policy. We begin to, you know, we've had to address some very difficult issues, things like talking on cell phones while you're driving, wearing seatbelts. All of those issues we've had to address, and the commission has had the very difficult challenge of, of passing those policies and enforcing those policies once they're passed. And, and so as a member of the safety committee, I can only say that due to, to the leadership of the commission, particularly Mr. Harkrow, we have managed to, to be able to continually cut our insurance premium, increase our amount of rebate, all by, by decreasing our loss. That's, that's what insurance is, is about. It's about loss prevention and management. And of course, Mr. Curtinoff, Mr. Wood being in the insurance business, understand that, and so they have done a very good job of allowing us to do what we need to do as a safety committee. And again, I commend Erbey and Matt on their leadership in, in the chairman's position of the safety committee, and we will continue to work for this commission and try to, to save money for the citizens every time we get a chance. But again, we want to thank all the department heads. I'd say particularly Mr. Brawls, Mr. Luther have done a great job with the road department because that was one of our, one of our big problem spots, and they have, they have really turned it around where we have almost no loss. Mr. Brawls, have we turned in anything from the road department this year?
Oh, thanks, sir.
I don't believe we turned in anything this past year from the road department as far as workers' comp is concerned, which has changed considerably from what it was five years ago. But thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate your time. Any questions that we can answer?
Yeah. I just, I wanted, I've got a little chart, just pictures worth a thousand words, and you can, you can see from this graph here, that red, that red chart, workers' comp. So in two thousand nine, our workers' comp was nearly five hundred thousand dollars a month. This year, it's a hundred ninety-one thousand. Wow. That's, that's a big change, and even as recent as, as 2013, it's about three hundred sixty thousand. So we're, we're, again, about half a bat, and that helps us. In two thousand nine, two thousand eight, that's when the economy started really going down and having these high premiums was extremely, put extreme deficit on the budget, and with our safety program, we started, what year, what year we start that?
Eleven.
Two thousand eleven. So you've seen since that time, you know, tremendous drop in, in the premiums, and it's based on, on safety, and we, you know, we have those meetings, and I know sometimes it's a little bit of a headache, but, but it's, it's worth it because we're putting emphasis on safety. And I think that emphasis means a tremendous amount in regards to the premiums.
And it does, and talking to other, other people across the state, it really reflects on the leadership. It's all about getting, you know, once y'all as a commission buy into, to a culture of safety, you know, and said, said, this is what we're going to do, and, and this is the path we're going to follow, so everybody has, has followed in place. And again, it's, you can't argue with the numbers, and.
And we've got room for improvement, whether there's things there that we can still improve on.
But that's a tremendous amount of savings, and that's, that's, again, you being good stewards of the taxpayer dollar and allowing us, and again, it's nothing we've done. As department heads as such, it's all about passing that on to, to, to the worker, explaining to them. You know, once, once we've got the workers to understand how important this is and what it means to them, then, then, you know, again, because that savings in money generates, it's, it's equal to generating revenue. The more money we can save, the more money we, we have to put into other, other areas and other programs. And, and so the workers, the, the employees of the county really need to be the ones who, who understand this is for them. This is what they have accomplished, not what any one department or one department head or even the safety committee or, or the, the commission has done. It's all of us working together, and, and I just want to say how much I appreciate all the department heads, like I said, particularly those high-risk areas like the road department, sheriff's office, in, in buying into our program and us being able to, to take advantage of these savings. And of course, under Mr. Harkrow's leadership with ACCA, they created this, and by being self-insured, we get to control, as Mr. Sharpe showed, we get to control based on our loss, how much our premiums are. But thank you, gentlemen. I appreciate y'all. If y'all have any questions, let us know, and I believe next commission meeting, we will have a safety meeting. Y'all are more than welcome to attend.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Let me just say this, and I'm a great, this, I'm on the government. Mr. Sharpe and those ladies back here in the corner, and Mr. Simpson, and Mr. Byrd, and others, Austin back there, and the ladies from DAS, I, I didn't overlook them intentionally, but I shudder to think where we could be without these ladies back here that, that I know some of them last night stayed till almost eight o'clock. I mean, we don't, we don't pay overtime for that. They did that because of good employees, and, and they, they oftentimes do that, and I couldn't ask for any more dedicated group of people than we have, and you gentlemen around this table have made that possible, and, you know, oftentimes we neglect to make that information available, and I want to do that today, and I, I thank you so much. Anybody have anything to say?
I'm just quick to say, you know, in governments, it's very, very, very rare that anything, the cost of anything goes down, and it's, it's really impressive that the cost of this insurance has went down because of your, your work. This program was started, and I commend Mr. Harkrow and Mr. Cock and Daw. Mr. Jackson, it was started the year before I came on office, been in office, so I've just done part of extending it, but I appreciate their leadership and their forethought to start this safety program. That's great results.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Appreciate it. Thank you.
As important as the premium savings is, more importantly, fewer people have been hurt. That's what this is all about.
Thank you, and I neglect to, our council that's so faithful to us, and, and we appreciate you and all the years you've been with us. We thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wood.
All right. Council on Aging, Holidays, and Mr. Sharpe.
You have the schedule here, the Rural Health Transportation Council on Aging. They have a physical year calendar of holidays, and it's a little different than what our, our regular holidays are. It's, it's got four extra days that they, they have off, and those are going to be December 26th, 27th, 28th, and 31st, and those are days that those employees will need to go without payback, they owe an annual, they take annual, you know, because it's, it's extra days. The rest of them are mostly the same, a couple of exceptions, but they do this every year. They have to take those days off, off, off those days, and so I would recommend to improve their student interest.
Thank you, Mr. Sharpe. It's something we have to do every year just because of the way the dates fall. Any questions about that? If not, into your most honorable, Mr. Sharpe's question.
My turn.
Your second?
Second.
Motion seconded in discussion. Many, many, no saying aye. Anyone post make your objection. That concludes our agenda for the day. Let me just say this, at this particular time, Mr. Sharpe and our staff, myself, are working on our budget. We have to have that passed over the last three weeks of September. It is coming along very well. Of course, we couldn't have anybody more capable than, than Mr. Sharpe and our staff. Let me just say this, our, our county is as financially sound as any county in the state, and I'm thankful for that. We don't have, that doesn't mean we got all the money we need because we can't raise a tax, we can't vote on a tax, we can't do anything to the tax. That had to come from legislation. But with what money we have to spend, with what money we have to distribute according to law, our county is as financially sound as any county in the state, and that's matter of public record. And I'm thankful to have been a part of that, and I project these gentlemen around this table being so cooperative with me. You know, you look back, do you know that in the last eight years, we have not had a divided vote on this commission? Not a divided vote. That's not that we didn't disagree on something. But we worked those things out before they're put on the agenda. And I'm the one that sets the agenda, but if it's not worked out, I'm not putting it on. And that's the reason that these war stories you hear, somebody asked me the other day from down south Alabama, said, "How is it y'all getting along so well?" I said, "Well, you know, if we've got a problem, we work it out before it comes to a culmination." And that's worked well for us. And I think the public generally appreciates it. And it's not that we get to do everything we want to do. It's not that we have all the money that we want to have. But because of these men that sat around this table this year and years that have passed before we came along, our county's in the black, and it'll remain that way. And we'll have that completed in a short time and presented to you. But gentlemen, I thank you today for all that you do. This concludes our agenda. Our next meeting will be September eleventh here in the chamber.
One last comment, Chairman. I hasten to point out that we do not violate the sunshine laws. We come to an agreement about what goes on, okay? And we'll track for the record. And I assure you, that doesn't happen.
That we have work sessions every, every, before every meeting, that's there. It's the result of anybody can attend. Thank you, Mr. Cockidall.
Everyone, why?
Thank you, everybody. Our meeting will be September eleventh, two thousand and eighteen, here mostly adjourned.
Like most adjourned.
And without objection whatsoever. Thank you, gentlemen.